Is he all set? You all set?
We're not recording on the computer yet. Can I have a few seconds?
Sure.
Now it turned on. Yep, all yours, JP.
Okay, we're gonna get going. Good evening, welcome to the October 22nd zoning board of adjustment meeting. To my left is Mr. Carter Fock, who's deputy planning manager for the city of Nashua. Across the way, we have Nick Knakis, Mr. Jay Minkara, Mr. Robert Shaw, Mrs. Estafias Boris, Ms. Mary Ellen McKay, who acts as our secretary, and I'm JP Boucher, and I'm your chair tonight. This meeting is recorded by written transcript, audio tape, and video. We ask that you please direct all testimony to the microphone, and only one person speak at a time. If you don't have tonight's copy of the agenda, you'll find it on the back table in the back of the auditorium. Tonight, we'll be hearing requests for deviations from the Nashua zoning code in the form of application of special exceptions and variances, and I'll explain both. Special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance permits only under special circumstances. The five criteria that this board needs to grant a request for a special exception are, that one, the requested use must be listed in table of use regulations as a special exception; two, the requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety; three, the requested use will not overload any public water drainage, sewer system, or any other municipal system such that other areas of the city will be subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, or general welfare; four, any special regulations for the use set forth in other sections of zoning ordinance are fulfilled; and five, the required use will not impair the integrity or character of the district of adjoining zones nor be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of the residents of Nashua. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that the ordinance does not permit. The five criteria that need to be established for approval of a variance are, one, the variance will not be contrary to public interest; two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed; three, substantial justice is done; four, the values of surrounding properties are not diminished; and five, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. Per our city of Nashua bylaws, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. In addition, this board will hear any in all scheduled cases, as long as a quorum of three voting board members are present at this meeting, which we have a quorum this evening. Any citizen has a right to contest the decision that this board makes. Should we make a decision that you believe is an error, you have a right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received through Mr. Fock and the city and national planning department within thirty calendar days from the day after a decision was made. Should this board not grant the rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court, and you can contact Mr. Fock for more information. Per our approved zoning board of adjustment bylaws, the review and decision of each application occurs in two parts. The first part is called a public hearing. This is where the applicant and citizens address this board and speak to the merits of this case, of the case. The order of testimony is as follows. First, the applicant will have fifteen minutes to present their case; then, those in favor will have a limit of five minutes each to speak; then, those in opposition or with questions will have a limit of five minutes each to speak; then, the applicant has five minutes to speak in rebuttal; and then finally, a representative, and only one person of those in oppositions or with questions, will have five minutes to speak in rebuttal. Again, we ask that you please direct all testimony to this board and not to anyone in the audience. If you have any questions about an application, they are to be directed to the board, and we'll get them answered for you. The second part of this evening's meeting is what we call the public meeting. This is where the board debates the merits of the case amongst ourselves. Please note that during a public meeting, there is no testimony allowed from the audience. We ask that you please silence the cell phones. If you need to have a conversation, we ask that you step out in the hallway. This auditorium has excellent acoustics, and we can hear everything you're saying from up here. Mr. Fock, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
No, there are not.
Does anybody in the audience have any questions before we get started? Okay, so tonight, our board operates on five votes, voting members, five votes are needed to, five maximum votes are what we can do. So tonight, we have six members in attendance. Three members are alternates. So when we go to each case, we'll tell you who they are. All members are able to participate in our discussions, ask questions freely, are able to participate in the public meeting, but when it comes to the vote, those individuals will not vote, but they are able to participate in all our proceedings. So for the first case, the three alternate members right now that serve on the board are Mr. Nick Knakis, Mr. Jay Minkara, and Mrs. Estafia Boris. So for the first case, the permanent members are Mr. Shaw, Ms. McKay, and myself. So in the first case, it will be Estafia, Mrs. Estafia Boris, and Mr. Jay Minkara on the first case. Second case, members will be, the alternate members will be Mr. Jay Minkara and Mr. Nick Knakis. On the third case, it will be Ms. Estafia Boris and Mr. Jay Minkara. And on the fourth case, it will be Ms. Estafia Boris and Mr. Nick Knakis. If any of our members need to recuse themselves, they will do so, and when a member recuses themselves, they just usually step down into the audience during that case only. So that will be the procedure. So if there's any questions, we'll answer them as we go along. So again, for the first case, it will be Mr. Shaw, Mr. Boucher, Ms. McKay, Ms. Boris, and Mr. Minkara, okay? But Mr. Knakis will be participating unless he has to step down. So I'll call the first case, open the public hearing for the first case. The owner is Amerco Real Estate Company, applicant at Gottsmann &amp; Hollis, PA, 476 Amherst Description is Amerco Real Estate Company, owner Gottsmann &amp; Hollis, PA, applicant 476 Amherst Street, sheet H, lot 23, requesting a special exception from land use code section 190-115 to work in a forty-foot other wetland and wetland buffer to allow for the installation of an underground sewer pipe. It's in the PIMU zone, Ward 2. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Morgan Hollis. I'm an attorney with Gottsmann &amp; Hollis at 39 East Pearl Street in Nashua. The property question has an address of 476 Amherst Street, and it is formerly known as the Fabre's site. Longtime occupant and user of the property, recently changed hands to my client, Amerco Real Estate Company. It was originally a two-lot parcel, with the front lot being 116 and the rear lot being 23, and recently, a lot merger was filed with the city and the registry of deeds, so we are now talking about a single lot, Lot 116. The user of the property will be a U-Haul facility. We were before this board for a variance for the use and received that approval. The engineer who's with me this evening, Earl Blatchford of Hayner Swanson, Inc., then proceeded to perform the necessary engineering and site work for the new proposed development. There's an existing building, which will be, will be and is being converted to a U-Haul operation for the rental of trucks and administrative office, and then they're going to build a new building, which has been shown on a site plan and presented to the planning board, and that will be for self-storage. During the process of the engineering review and preparation, of course, all the due diligence with regard to utilities was done, and sewer is in Amherst Street, water's in Amherst Street, gas is in Amherst Street. However, a problem arose in that the existing sewer pipe servicing the existing facility is not at a depth which is appropriate to be able to accommodate a flow from the newly constructed building into the interceptor in Amherst Street. So a new sewer would, pipe would have to be constructed from the new building to Amherst Street. Unfortunately, Amherst Street was recently repaved as of June, and in June, once that paving went down, you can't dig it up for five years under the city's ordinance. You're restricted from opening. And because the existing sewer connection is inadequate for the new building, a new pipe would have to go in, require, and digging up the pavement, not possible. So the engineer looked to the alternative, which is a parallel city sewer main located to the rear of the property, which is down by the railroad tracks. In order to get down to the railroad tracks, there is a drainage swale immediately before the railroad tracks. In fact, there's a drainage swale around almost all of the property, and we need to cross, that drainage swale is classified as wetland due to its hydroic soils and occasional standing water for drainage purposes, seasonal drainage water. We also need to cross the buffer, which is adjacent to the wetlands, and that is why we're here this evening. As you know, under a special exception, there are five criteria that need to be met, and one of those criteria is we also have to meet the special requirements. For filling a wetland, there are nine special requirements, and I'll address those when I get to the special requirement portion. For purposes of the five requirements of a special exception, the first requirement under section 190-34F is, the use must be listed under the special exceptions for the code, and it is under section 190-115, filling wetlands or buffer. B, use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. This area, as shown on the plan, which was submitted with the application and is shown on the plan of the board, is located very far from where there's going to be any pedestrian activity or any traffic activity. This fill, by the way, is only going to occur over a course of one or two days. It's essentially digging the area, putting the pipe down, remediating the area, reconstructing the drainage swale exactly as it is, replacing the necessary soil and the necessary vegetation. So it'll be disturbed for a total of, we think, two days, then back to its original status. Use will not overload public water, drainage, or sewer systems so as to carry, so as to create any problems within the city or subject the city to any hazards. We're not going to be doing anything. There's adequate capacity in the sewer system, but crossing the wetland has absolutely no impact on any drainage system, sewer system, or water, as this is not part of a massive drainage system we're crossing. It's a localized drainage ditch. Special regulatory conditions, under section 115, as I said, there are nine conditions. I'm going to address those last. The final requirement is will not impair the integrity or be out of character or of the neighborhood or the surrounding or immediate district. This won't be visible to anyone. Once it's done over a two-day span, it'll be covered, remediated, all the ground restored to what its original condition was. Under the nine conditions, which usually the engineer might address, but this is pretty straightforward, and what I would, what I think I would like to do, Mr. Chairman, is I have prepared a proposed list of findings, which essentially is what I'm going to speak to, but it's an aid for the board. When you get to it, you don't have to take notes of what I'm arguing. You can just go right through the list if you'd like. So the first point that we have to cover is that the user activity proposed and its intended impacts cannot reasonably be avoided, and that the, and the reason it can't be avoided, as I state in this document in front of you, which is proposed findings, is that the existing municipal sewer system from the existing building is not deep enough to allow the proposed new development on the site to be connected and tied into the existing pipeline requiring its own service, sewer service. However, the existing service connection in Amherst Street cannot be made without disrupting the existing pavement and by ordinance, which new pavement occurred in June of 2019, connection cannot be made for a period of five years. So this is the only way to connect to sewer. We have to show that the least damaging route methodology has been selected, and that which is being proposed is the best practical alternative, in that the property itself is surrounded by wetland ditches, including to the rear of the property immediately adjacent. Sewer pipe is going to take the shortest distance in terms of least amount of impact, shortest distance over the wetland, and that engineering has been presented and approved by the city staff. It's also been vetted before the conservation commission, which has had a meeting on this, and a site walk, and wrote a letter of recommendation, which I believe you have in your file. Number three, the reasonable and acceptable impact mitigation measures have been incorporated where necessary and appropriate to minimize wetland loss or degradation. So this proposal will not result in any loss or degradation, as the wetland is a seasonable, man-made drainage ditch or swale with only seasonable water, construction's only for a matter of days, as I said, complete restoration following construction. Number four, the overall impact of encroaching into wetland or buffer areas is necessary for the productive use of the adjoining buildable lot, and as such, non-encroachment is outweighed by the benefits derived. This is a minimal temporary encroachment into the buffer and the wetlands, and it's absolutely necessary in order to make use of this property other than the existing building on site. If you don't grant the special exception, the majority of this lot...
This is the existing building, the old building, this is the wetland. This portion of...
Attorney Hollis, you need to bring the mic over.
This portion of the lot to the rear or south away from Amherst Street would be totally unusable for five years because of the moratorium. Number five, no significant impact on the habitat or of rare or endangered species or exemplary communities as listed by the state of New Hampshire or federal government will result. We received an email dated September 30th from Amy Lamb of the New Hampshire Natural Heritage Bureau advising that the Bureau does not expect impacts to the only threatened or endangered species, which is wild lupine, as a result of this project, as the work which is proposed is to the back of the site, but only occurring within woods, which are too dense to support the wild lupine. And I have that email. Number six, the best available adequate erosion and sedimentation control measures are incorporated, in that the city of Nashua Conservation Commission, in reviewing the application, provided a favorable recommendation with stipulations of removal of invasive species and best management practices used to minimize tree damage, and that at all times throughout the application to the state of New Hampshire, the applicant has agreed to best management practices in accordance with the Department of Environmental Services. We have not yet received a wetland permit. It is pending, but the application states best management practices will be utilized. We agree with the two stipulations as recommended by the Conservation Commission. Number seven, the proposed activity of use shall not significantly impair wetland capacity to provide important wildlife and fishery functions, including habitat, food, shelter, breeding, migratory, and overwintering, in that the wetland is seasonal, it being a man-made ditch or swale, and that according to Wetland Consulting Services' report dated December 26th, the various ditches are sparsely vegetated, the bordering uplands are mostly vegetated with white pine, with intermittent water flows providing no real important wildlife or fishery functions. And restoration following the two-day temporary disturbance will restore the wetland and the wetland buffer to its original condition. I have some pictures of the wetlands, if you all did not get a chance to go out there, either due to weather or other reasons, so I'm going to submit those conditions, so, pictures so you can see them. I also have the Wetland Consulting Services' report, which I just referenced, and I'll submit that. But I think the bottom line is there's no function in these wetlands, you'll see when you see the pictures. Number eight, that the project shall not impair the stability of a water body's bank in that the water body is a seasonal drainage ditch, and the bank is approximately two to three feet in height, and will be restored following the one-to-two-day construction period of temporary disturbance. This is really meant for when you're drilling or digging into the side of a major water body, that once you're done, it shouldn't make the bank more fragile. In this case, we're talking about a two-to-three-foot-deep drainage ditch, which will be restored exactly as it was. Number nine, that the wetland and buffer function of hydrologic absorption capacity and storage shall not be impaired, in that the restoration will be full and complete back to its original condition following the minor disruption of two-day construction. And I have with me this evening, as I said, Earl Blatchford is here, if you have any questions about the technical aspects of the actual crossing itself.
Give you two minutes to take a look at what's been passed out, and if anybody has any questions for Attorney Hollis. Just hang on for a minute, Mr. Attorney Hollis.
Yes. Yeah, I apologize, but I wanted to make sure I got the pictures to you, because it is a long hike back there.
Mr. Minkara, you got a question?
Will the bottom elevation of the swale be the same post-construction as it is pre-construction?
Will the bottom elevation of the swale be the same post-construction as pre-construction? Earl?
Yes.
I'll let you all look at that, if there's anybody else in the meantime that has any questions for Attorney Hollis. When you're done, just let me know if you have any questions or not. So Mr. Shaw is no, Mr. Minkara no, I'm no, no, Mr. Knakis no. Hey, I think we're all set, Mr. Attorney Hollis.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay, does anybody else like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none. Anybody with opposition or with questions concerning this application? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Minkara.
I think it's a very straightforward application, really precisely the reason why we have special exceptions for wetlands impacts. You know, clearly, the proposed impact is necessary for the reasonable use of the property. It's unavoidable. The impact is temporary and minor in nature, and the function of the impacted wetland area will be restored after construction, so I support the application.
Mr. Shaw.
Pretty much ditto.
And same with myself, and obviously, we have a letter from the Conservation Commission, obviously, a favorable recommendation, so I think that holds some weight with me also. So anybody else?
No, I'm in favor, pretty much, as a, it's necessary.
Never you did.
Oops. I turned it off so I don't rattle my papers. I'm in favor for all the reasons mentioned, and it's necessary.
Spores?
I'm also in favor.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody want to make a, make a motion? I could make it if you want.
I'm fine.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Shaw.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owner, Amerco Real Estate Company, the applicant Gottsmann &amp; Hollis, PA. The address is 476 Amherst Street. The application is for a special exception from the land use code section 190-115 to work in a forty-foot other wetland and wetland buffer to allow for the installation of an underground sewer pipe. This is in the PI/MU zone. The special exception criteria are met. It's listed in the table of uses, as already noted. By testimony and by all appearances, there will be no impact for creating any kind of traffic congestion or pedestrian safety. This is a very small and minor effort, that's, it will be actually very temporary as well. It will not overload public water, drainage, or sewer, other municipal system, although ironically, it is to tie into the sewer system. The special regulations are fulfilled, again, by testimony, and all nine conditions as defined in those special criteria are met, and it will be adhered to. There will be no impact to the integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood or be detrimental to the health, wealth, morals, or welfare of residents. Again, this is a very minor impact. It's temporary, a matter of just a few days. The restoration will put things back just like it was, and so, and it is a necessary condition to undertake this because of the limitation with, as noted, tying into the sewer line that's in Amherst Street at the front of the property. There are two criteria or stipulations from the Conservation Commission as provided in the letter dated October 14th, which, again, the applicant will adhere to. So with that, I move to approve this special exception.
Second.
Second, by Mr. Minkara, is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? That's five to nothing. That motion passes. Thank you very much for coming. With that, I'll close case number one. I'll close the public meeting for case number one. I'd like to open the public hearing for case number two. Case number two is Chop Acquisition LLC. Applicant is ID Associates Incorporated. The address is 255 to 269 Amherst Street. Description, Chop Acquisition LLC owner, ID Associates Incorporated, applicant 255 to 269 Amherst Street. Sheet G, lot eight, requesting the following variances from land use code section 191-08. One, to exceed maximum number of wall signs, three permitted, five proposed, and two, to exceed maximum wall sign area, 150 square feet permitted, 431 square feet proposed. It's in the general business, general business zone, Ward 2. Welcome. And just for the record, Mr. Minkara and Mr. Knakis will be voting, will be the voting members, the alternate voting members on this case, but Ms. Boris will be participating. So just welcome, give us your name and address, please.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Heather Dudko, and I'm a sign permit consultant working with ID Associates, who's the sign manufacturer for floor and decor. So the proposal before the board tonight is to, is for a variance to exceed the number of wall signs and the allowable square footage. Floor and Decor is currently trying to break into the New England market. They have more stores south, New Jersey, that way, and they've just opened a store in Avon in Saugus, and this would be their third store opening in the New England area. They will be leasing the Staples, the vacant Staples tenant space and the Bob's Stores tenant space, so they'll have a pretty large store up at the plaza there. They are proposing five signs, and I do have some current pictures, if I could pass those out. The main ID sign over the front entrance is the floor and decor, and then, as in typical fashion, they like to label the tile, the wood, and the stone. Those are the materials available in the store, and that kind of directs the customers when they go into this huge area, that the tile, when they go in, they can kind of go to the left, the wood would be kind of in front of them, and then the stone would be over to the right. And the fourth sign that they're proposing is on a canopy over the customer pickup entrance, so that would direct the customers who are picking up their orders to go right over to that end of the store. The signs themselves are red internally illuminated channel letters, facelit, consistent with the signage that's in that area. The total frontage of their leased property would be 378 linear feet. And if you were to apply the formula of 1.5 times signage, it would equal 567 square feet. And the total proposed with the five signs is 431. So if there were no limitation, if the 150 was not the overall limit, they would be within the one and a half square foot that they'd be allowed. It's a very large storefront. The store is at the back of the parking lot, so people coming into the plaza have to go to the back, and they're also trying to gain some visibility from Everett Turnpike. They also do have a sign, there was a ground sign that they'll reface, they're going to take the two... They also do have a sign, there is a ground sign that they'll reface. They're going to take the two panels for the Staples and the Bob's, and they'll reface that on the existing ground sign. So, that's why they have the 1.5 formula for the wall signage. To address the five points of the variance, I know Rosalyn Holderfield, she's the rep for floor and decor, and she had a family emergency, and she's the one who prepared this application. So, I've done a few of the stores, so she asked me to come in and help her do this. The granting of the variance is not contrary to public interest. It's well within the proportion of the building, and it does not alter the character of the neighborhood there. It's a commercial neighborhood. They're in a commercial plaza. So, they would not alter the essence of the neighborhood there. It observes the spirit of the ordinance. They do try to take into consideration the proportion of the building, the storefront, how far back from the street it is, how many feet the, you know, off Amherst Street that the customer has to pull into the parking lot to view the building. So, they do try to take all of that into consideration when they, when they propose the signage and make it proportionate to what they have there for tenant space. Substantial justice would be done. It's a, it would not adversely impact the general public, as I said. It's a, it's a new market for them. They'd like to get some visibility. They're, you know, I think they'd be competing with other sto, you know, of course, they're competing with other stores, but just to break into the market, they'd like to get some visibility and make sure that they're adequately signed. And it would not diminish the values of surrounding properties. It's a commercial area, and they're hoping by breaking into this market, they'll increase some traffic in that area and maybe increase customer base for other stores in that plaza and that street. And little enforcement of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship. This is a pretty standard sign proposal that they use. They do like to use the three product names, tile, wood, and stone, so that customers know that that's what's available there. And when they're looking for bulk product or just a consumer or a contractor, that, those are the options available to them. And without that visibility of that product line, they feel that it would be a hardship for them if it was just the main ID. So, that's what I have.
Rosa?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. In your top picture where Bob's was...
Yep.
Assuming you're going to change the roof line because it's obviously different in the second picture.
Yes.
Now, you said you wanted something there for pickup and drop-off. So, I'm also assuming that the door that was to Bob's is going to be utilized now for people who are picking up and dropping off, correct?
Correct. It'll be a separate doorway to go in. I don't know if it's the exact doorway that's there now for Bob's because they will be remodeling the building, and I'm not part of the remodel team. So, I'm not quite sure if they're just, if they'll utilize the exact same door, but it will be a separate entrance.
Okay.
To pick up.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Oh, Mrs. Shaw?
Yes.
Do you, do you by chance know what the current square footage of the Staples and Bob's signs are? Because in my mind, that's a key part of things. I'm looking at what looks like, quite frankly, less overall signage for your application, but it would help me to know the numbers, and maybe Mr. Falk has it. I don't know.
I do not know that.
I do have the sign permits for all the tenants. Bob's, actually, they received a variance from this board in 1998 for 224 square feet. And A.C. Moore has a permit for 144 and a half square feet. They meet the ordinance. Staples did receive a variance in June of 1997 for 255 square feet. However, their permit was only for 180. That's, that's the, they must have revised their signage. So, altogether, Bob's and Staples come out to just a little over 400 square feet, like 404 square feet for those two spaces.
That's...
One sign at each.
Yep. All right. That's all I was trying to get at. Thank you.
Whole Foods also meets the ordinance, by the way.
Any other questions for the applicant? Again, just for clarity, the tile, stone, and wood, that's internally illuminated signs also?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. If you have a seat.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe you'll come back. We'll have you back.
Okay.
Anybody else that would like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none. Anybody with opposition, questions, or concerns with this application? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Shaw?
I guess my, my first impression is that, in fact, I actually thought, it was actually surprising to me in a way, I guess I'll say, is that, I mean, I guess technically, they are asking for a little bit less than what currently exists on those two storefronts, but perhaps it's either because of just the nature of the way the multiple signs are. It seems to be even less, it seems like there's actually would be less total square footage, or the, the impact visually to me seems much less. Maybe it's the fact that, you know, the Bob's is no longer up on its own kind of, you know, extra architectural kind of feature, et cetera. Maybe because there's the multiple signs, it spreads things out. But I think considering the fairly large space that this business is going to occupy, that the square footage of the signs, their argument in the application, you know, about how they're setback from the road and everything else, I think this is actually quite reasonable, and I don't see it being a burdensome kind of request. So, I, I'm, I feel in support of it unless there's arguments that my colleagues have that I haven't been considering.
Mr. McCarron?
I would agree. I think what was really a deciding factor for me are, because I had the same question. I'm looking at what was requested versus what's there and kind of wondering. But, but hearing that prior variances were granted, of course, that makes sense. It was either that or a change in regulation. So, clearly, prior board found that the criteria was met on the site. I, I think in looking at it, one, because the building is perpendicular to Amherst Street, you can't see the property. You can't see what's in it from Amherst. So, the, so the view of the property clearly has to be from the turnpike. And I think that is somewhat what separate, you know, what sets the property apart and distinguishes it. But you have to be able to see the signage. It has to be large enough to be seen. And of course, the signage has to be able to identify the building as well as what it is functionally. So, for those reasons, I support the application.
I agree as well for probably the same reasons. It's setback fairly far from the main roadway going by, and it's perpendicular to it rather than parallel as buildings usually are. And it's pretty difficult to see the Staples and Bob's signs from the highway as it is. So, given that and the fact that it has the appearance of less square footage than the current signage, I think that I'm in favor of the variance.
I too am in favor for all the aforementioned reasons. Plus, the span of this building is just so long, and you, the signage seems really well-spaced, and it doesn't crowd. It doesn't make your eye kind of focus on just one thing. Your eye travels the whole length or width of the building, and I think it's tastefully done. I am in support.
I'm also in support for all the reasons stated. Anybody want to make a motion? Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owner of Chop Acquisition LLC. The applicant is ID Associates, Inc. The address is 255-269 Amherst Street. The request is for the following variances from Land Use Code, Section 190-108. Number one, to exceed the maximum number of wall signs, where three permitted and five are proposed. And secondly, to exceed maximum wall sign area, 150 square feet is permitted, 431 square feet are proposed. And this is in the DB zone. I'll make this motion to approve both variances together. So, the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. There are several. This property, as noted, is, the primary structure runs perpendicular to Amherst Street. So, there's very little visibility to Amherst Street proper. The primary visibility is to the turnpike, which is, it's already fairly far setback from as well. And the signage will not actually be that significant at those distances. Also, want to note that the previous occupants of the two storefronts that this one usage now will be utilizing had signage which was actually larger than was proposed and by all apparent visual appearances between the several smaller signs by having the five signs instead of the three and the change in architecture of the storefront. There's multiple aspects of this that it appears that the visual impact and the kind of appropriate ratio of the signage would be quite reasonable for this store. It's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, again, accounting for these very special situations with the property. There's no testimony or indication of any negative adverse or negative or adverse effects on property values for surrounding parcels. It's not contrary to public interest, and substantial justice will be served. And again, I make this motion to approve these two area variances.
Second of I, Mr. Knakis. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's five to nothing. Congratulations. Your application's been approved. Just be aware of the thirty-day window of appeal, but other than that, we're all set.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you. With that, I'll close the public meeting for case number two.
You can just wait down in the audience. That's the normal practice. You should also just, kind of, it should be announced formally what you're doing, so.
I'd like to open the public hearing for case number three. Case number three is Christos and Denise Scumnietales. I'm, I apologize for that. It spells S-C-U-M-N-I-O-T-A-L-E-S. The applicant is G.C. Pizza Hut, 303 Main Street. Sheet 100, Lot 5, requesting the following variances from Land Use Code, Section 190-41, subsection B, subsection four and five. One, for a minimum stacking space length, 160 feet required, 86 feet proposed. And two, for a minimum distance to drive-through exit, minimum of 60 feet required, 31 feet proposed. It's in the D3 MU zone, Ward 6. Before we get started, is there anybody that needs to recuse themselves?
I have to recuse myself.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Knakis will step down in the audience for this case, and will return after this case has been concluded. Okay. With that... So, on this case, it's, yeah, Mr. McCarron, Ms. Boris. And Mr. Knakis has recused himself. Okay, welcome. Give us your name and address.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Robert Duvel. I'm an engineer with T.F. Moran here on behalf of the applicant for this project. As you can see, the project is for a proposed Pizza Hut drive-through restaurant with no indoor seating. There's a walk-up window in the front and a drive-through window for pickup only in the back. The property's at 303 Main Street, at the corner of Main Street and Lake. And it's in the downtown three mixed-use zone where drive-through restaurants are permitted with a conditional use permit, which is, an application has been submitted for that and will be heard along with the site plan by the planning board. It's a small lot of about, well, less than 10,000 square feet, formerly the site of Paul Pierre's Restaurant. And the site is almost entirely paved at present, and I've just passed around, in addition to the colored site plan and architectural, I've passed around some photos so that you can refresh your memories of what the existing site looks like. It's basically a glass and block, one-story building on an entirely paved site. So, before I go through the five criteria, I'd like to just talk a little bit about how this use works. It's not a typical fast-food drive-through type restaurant by any means. As I said, the pizzas are ordered online and picked up at the window. There's no transaction at the window. The payment is made online or at the counter in front for walk-in customers. So, that the, the way that the window works is when you order your pizza and you make payment for the pizza, you're scheduled a time to arrive at the restaurant. You arrive at that time, you pull up to the window, they hand you your pizza, and you drive off. So, that is, is all that happens at the window. If for some reason, the order is not ready, the person arrives early, or there's some kind of a problem with the order, the driver is simply instructed to park the vehicle and, and clear the window. So, this is different than a fast-food restaurant in that a fast-food restaurant, which averages up to two minutes and more per stop at the window, this is less than a minute and typically 30 seconds or less as a result. And because of the small size of the use, where there's only 20 or 30 vehicles arriving during the peak time, and the peak time, it's closed in the morning peak, and in the afternoon peak, their peak starts in the 5 to 5:30 range, and they'll maybe get 20 to 30 in that peak hour somewhere between 5 and 7. So, that most of their traffic, light as it is, happens after peak hour, which is typically over, and even in the downtown area, it's over 5:30 to 6:00. So, I think that makes us a significant differentiator from a fast-food, fast-food use. And it's, it's kind of a new concept, especially the payment online and the scheduled arrival. They're just starting this Pizza Hut, and some other competitors are just starting this around the country and around New England. And the pickup-only idea seems to be catching on. It's working effectively. One is actually under construction in Manchester from the same vendor, Pizza Hut. There's, there's one in Concord, a Domino's drive-up pickup that's been existing for a few years, but that does allow transactions at the window, so it's not really the same thing. There is a, another one that's been approved in North Concord, also under construction. So, this type of site is ideal for this use. They're looking for small urban sites, near high-density residential neighborhoods. They do get a lot of walk-in, is, and the, and the parking demand, the traffic demand, and the stacking demand associated with the drive-through are low. So, that's what makes this a good site for this. And frankly, what makes it a difficult site for any other type of development is what makes this a good site. It's very hard to find a use, and that's why that building has struggled over the years. It's very hard to find a use that can occupy, especially on a corner lot, that small footprint of building, that small a lot, have that little onsite parking and operate effectively. But this use actually thrives in that, in that situation. As you can see here also...
You have to bring the mic with you. Sorry.
Here's the proposed architecture. So, you can see it's a substantial improvement over what's existing. It's a very modern and young and kind of a funky feel to it. And it's a building, it's a re-cladding and a re-roofing of the... And it's a building, it's a re-cladding and a re-roofing of the entire building, but it's on the existing footprint. Couple of other things I'd like to point out is that this use actually did have a drive-through window. You can actually see it in the photos, and the proposed windows in approximately the same place as that previous historical drive-through window. Typical hours of operation are eleven to ten, Sunday to Thursday, and eleven to midnight, Friday, Saturdays. So let me go through the five criteria. Granting of the requested variance would not be contrary to the public interest because perhaps first and foremost, this is a difficult site, it's been vacant, it's certainly in the public interest to turn vacant public buildings, or vacant buildings into thriving, successful businesses. And here we have a national credit-worthy operator that's going to be putting a substantial investment into this lot and putting in a new, modern architecture and feel, and a use that's a low-traffic generator, neighborhood-friendly use that goes well with the surrounding neighborhood, and in fact, fits in very well to the surrounding neighborhood, which, which already features several fast-food restaurants with drive-throughs, drive-through banks, drive-through drugstores. So it certainly is not altering the character of the neighborhood, and to the extent that it is altering the character of the neighborhood, it's in a very beneficial way. Likewise, a proposed use observes the spirit of the ordinance because the nature of the use is such that the stacking, where one hundred sixty feet or about eight vehicles is required, and eighty-six feet or just over four vehicles is, is provided, but that's adequate for this use. If you figure that there, even in the peak hour, the average traffic is, is one car showing up for its order every two to three minutes, staying less than a minute in this transaction. So most of the time, in fact, forty of the sixty minutes of that peak hour, there will be no stacking at the window, perhaps even more than that. And certainly having the ability to stack two, and if there's any reason that an order is being delayed, that car is immediately parked. There are five customer spaces onsite, plus three employee spaces, and the vehicle would be moved out, ensuring that there's no backup in that stacking, and ensuring that that extra stacking, which is really part of a sort of a one-size-fits-all ordinance, is excessive and not necessary for this particular use. I should also speak to the other count of the variance that we're seeking, which is for similar reasons, for congestion and safety reasons, requires that there be sixty feet at the exit of the drive-through. In this case, we have thirty feet. But twenty of those thirty feet are clear of the building, which is probably the most important thing. There's a car length between the curb line and the building, so there's plenty of sight distance for an exiting car. And, again, because of the low volume of the drive-through and the, and this particular use, you don't have the problem which you would have typically in a fast-food drive-through where if a car has to stop momentarily to wait for an opening in the traffic or a gap from the signal, it would tend to back up the drive-through lane. In this case, that doesn't happen because, again, most of the time, two-thirds of the time, there is no stacking at all. So there's very little chance that a vehicle will, will cause a backup through the drive-through lane because there's no room for a couple of cars to wait as it exits the drive-through. Substantial justice would be done to the property owner because essentially this use depends on this, on this pickup component as well as the walk-in component. And for the reasons we've already discussed, the harm to the public is nil, there's no safety or, or negative traffic impacts to the public, and it's certainly a boon to the neighborhood to have this, this new building and investment in that, in that particular neighborhood. The proposed use will not diminish the values of the surrounding properties. I'm not offering any expert testimony because I think in this case it's self-evident that this upgrade of this existing obsolete building would be a benefit to the neighborhood. And finally, special conditions, that this is a very small-size corner lot. It's in an area that has a lot of vehicle-centered traffic, and this is a neighborhood-centered use. We're actually reducing the amount of pavement on the lot, providing more landscaping, reducing the drainage runoff of the lot. There's a good sidewalk infrastructure in that neighborhood along with protected pedestrian phase that allows easy access for people living in the neighborhoods to the west to, to access this place. So it's, it's an ideally situated for a neighborhood-type business, but neighborhood-type businesses that would typically have, require larger footprints or larger onsite parking just can't fit in this space. So in summary, I think we meet all of the criteria for variance for this particular use, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about the use.
Mr. Shaw.
Yeah, I've got quite a few questions. So one's just maybe more, a little bit of a housekeeping, but I thought, I heard you say there were three employee parking spaces, but I only see two. Did I, I don't know if you misstated or I misheard, or I'm just not understanding. I see five, what looks like customers, which you said, but I'm only seeing two employee spaces.
Well, there's two, two marked employee spaces. One of the employees is actually a driver, so most of the time he's not there onsite, so that space would be available for customers.
Okay. I guess I'm just, basically, I heard you say there's eight total spaces, basically, and I see seven on the plot.
Yes, I did.
That math doesn't work for me.
There are seven spaces. Five plus two.
So I'm just gonna kind of try to cover several different things. So the employee parking spaces, I kind of get the sense that you're probably trying to avoid having too much traffic in and out of those spaces, probably just from how you handle pedestrians on the site, and, and even maybe the vehicles entering, but are they going to be clearly marked as employee-only so that you're, to truly, what you, do what you can to discourage customers from parking in those spaces?
They will be signed as employee-only spaces.
So I guess that the, the big part of what I want to kind of explore, and I, I think I'm generally okay about your proposal and kind of your rationale, argument, whatever you want to say, about not needing the amount of stacking because of the nature of this drive-through business. I'm actually a little more concerned at the moment about a couple aspects still of how this, the pickup lane will work in that you noted that if somebody shows up early and their pizza's not ready or whatever, there's some issue, that they could just park in one of the spaces. I just don't see how that's going to work because you're almost to the street already, and all I can see is somebody has to pull up and then back up. I mean, maybe if they're a handicap, you know, placarded vehicle, they might be able to just slide over in that space, but that, that's like not likely going to be in the normal situation. So I'm kind of concerned that there could be a number, you know, who knows what frequency, but, you know, people timing or the business's timing are such that I think it might be a, you know, enough of a common thing that I don't see how you're going to handle that well. And has there been any consideration for having, like, and I realize this starts to work against the whole stacking thing, but, you know, one of those like little, I don't know the right term for it, but like the little squawk box type of thing that would be earlier before you get to the actual window, that you would be able to kind of check and make sure you shouldn't be parking versus, you know, pulling up to the window. Help me understand how a vehicle really is going to maneuver if they show up, get to the window, and their order's not going to be ready.
Well, first of all, the, one of the most important factors in what makes this work, and it does work successfully throughout the northeast and, and the south of the country where they have a number of these, is the scheduled pickup. So you actually have a time. You're not just guessing when you will be arrived. You'll be told it's, you know, your order will be ready at six fifteen or seven forty-five or whatever the case may be. If there's a problem, or if you arrive early anyway despite the schedule, and, and it's, it's busy and the parking spaces are full, or, you know, for one reason or another, you can't move out of the way back up in the drive-through island park, which would be an option. You would just have to circle the site and go around the block and come back. So it's infrequent, and, and frankly, if you're that early, probably would, by the time you go around the block and come back, would be just about the time that the pizza would take to be ready. So presumably that, in the few instances where that does happen, it only happens once. And also, you could park in available public parking nearby and just walk in also if that, if that were a problem.
Okay. The other thing is, I'm concerned about you have also the two, essentially two exit lanes. How are you planning on handling the left turns and right turns? Because what happens when somebody's picked up and they want to make a right turn to go south on Main Street, and somebody that walked in and went back to their car, and now they want to make a left turn on the Main Street? I see some real conflict there. And this is where I think not having this distance after the pickup window to the street doesn't give vehicles an opportunity to basically merge, get down to a single lane or whatever. So I'm very concerned about that, and I think maybe my colleagues are based on a few nods I saw. So how, has that been considered, and what, what, you know, what actions are planned to deal with that?
Well, I don't think it will be a problem as a traffic engineer because of the volumes here and because of the frequent gaps that are provided by the signal being immediately adjacent to the site. However, if, if it were, and this is really perhaps more of a planning board issue than a zoning board issue, if, if in review of the traffic study for this project, the planning board were to find that it's preferable to make exiting a right turn only, and, you know, that would be acceptable. So that, with the short throat to the intersection, it's not a good idea to make left turns anyway. So even if there were a single lane, that probably wouldn't be a bad idea to restrict that to right turn exits only.
Yeah, I mean, I have a concern already, knowing, knowing this intersection, it's a, it just seems like it's always been a little bit of a challenging intersection. It seems like it's very hard to just have things timed out so that if you were coming out of that parking lot, that you can get basically northbound on Main Street and, you know, while traffic isn't already stacked up for one reason or another. So perhaps the right lane turn only is maybe makes sense, but I also know that, and I've seen too many places where we've attempted to force those kind of things through signage, even sometimes, you know, concrete, you know, kind of things to help force people to move a certain way, and people still work around them. So I'm, I'm not feeling real confident that, that even that is a sufficient kind of solution. But I'll, I'll let maybe my, my questions stop here and see if others want to follow anything.
I'll just follow up with that. You and Mr. Shaw covered a lot of what I had concerns about also. I will say that you are right, the planning board will look at the site plan, but I think what our responsibility is, is that when we approve, for example, a drive-through, we have to take, we're going to give the planning board an approval based upon the exception. So, so it is important that we, you know, we really look at this, you know, what's really going to happen. Yes, we're not going to determine how the, the site's going to be laid up, but I think there's some key points that I think make our decision, help us make a decision on whether or not we think that, you know, having an exception to the, the length of the drive-through is going to work or not. And, and again, you know, I think a lot of us have had enough experience with drive-throughs that, you know, this, this is something that, that we are kind of have somewhat of an expertise on as far as what's worked and what's not worked. So going on with Mr. Shaw, and, and again, I don't know if there was a traffic study done or anything initial, but I'm very familiar with this, this intersection as is Mr. Shaw and most of us are. I think that, you know, we can put this in the top four or five major intersections on Main Street. I mean, this, this is busy. This is what I observe, because I will come from the highway side, and I will come down Lake Street. I've seen people trying to take a left from Lake Street into Paul Pierre's, and they're waiting. And what that does is it holds up traffic coming up Lake Street. So if traffic's coming across, Mr. Shaw's coming across, that's holding up traffic. It's, and then you got people stuck in the intersection. So there's concerns there because there's only really one lane on the other side unless somebody's really squeezed over. So I have concerns about that. And then, again, I'm, I'm getting your concept that, that there shouldn't be a lot of people in, in that lane there, but what I'm thinking about is somebody's coming in or has angled their way into that lot where it's prevented other people from coming into that lot. So I have concerns with that. I have concerns with, again, leaving the property. I, I don't see how, taking a left out there, if you're lucky and the right time of the day, you're going to be able to take a left, but I know how many cars stack up to take a left. I know how many cars stack up to go straight on two lanes. I mean, it is, it is busy. And I understand what you were saying, and I was really listening to you when you said that, you know, it would be around the peak times. Main Street has become busy almost all day long. There, there are some lulls during the day, but it's definitely pretty busy. So I have concerns. I, I like the concept, I like the idea of what, what's being proposed. I just really am struggling with how, you know, approving the drive-through with this, with this, with this limited, you know, with the half, basically half, approving basically half, both with the, with the stacking and the exiting, how, how, how this is going to work here. So I guess from personal experience, it's kind of what, sometimes what rely, you know, we rely on some of our decision-making, is how is that going to work? How is this going to make this site successful? I hear what you're saying. I, I don't disagree with, what you're saying. I just have experienced this intersection enough times. When you come down and take a right off of Lake Street onto Main Street, if you're taking a right, if you understand the light pattern, you can, you know where to go, but a lot of people come down past the stop sign, and they're trying to make a right and not showing when the traffic's coming. But I also know that, you know, that lane tries to move its way out, but again, the straight or left-hand turn lane, Lake Street onto Main Street, going straight across and taking a left, stacks up. So again, I'm trying to understand really, if somebody's coming anywhere but down Lake Street, how they're going to come in. And then you did mention about, well, if the other opportunity is to go around the block. There is really no going around the block unless you take a right out, take a left into Seminole Plaza, come back around to the light. So I don't know, you know, I'm sure people will do that, and, and, you know, I know Pizza Hut is a great brand. I, I know, you know, that they have done, you know, other stores have remodeled, they're, they're being very successful. So I don't have an issue with the brand or what you're trying to do here. I just need more information and more comfort about how this site's going to work with traffic coming in and out. That's really, really my, my, my main concern.
If, if I could just make a few observations.
Sure.
And they're, they're good observations of yours, actually. I guess the first thing I'd like to say is that just up the street at Bank of New England, there's almost an identical situation. It's where there's about thirty feet, or actually less, a little less than thirty feet from the drive-through to the street, and you have also a second exiting lane next to it, but it seems to work well. You know, it's, it's not been a, a particular problem, it's been there for some time, I'm not exactly sure when it went in. And so I think there's reason to believe that it, it can be made to work. I also suggested that, you know, perhaps in, if this board were to, were to allow this use with some type of condition that made you comfortable, then we go to the planning board and we can discuss traffic in detail and work out these observations or these comments. I'm sure they're going to have the same ones. And we share it too. We think that it's important that channel, that the traffic be channelized there in such a way to make it safe, and perhaps we can even make some physical improvements to enforce a right turn. And perhaps we can even make some physical improvements to enforce a right turn only restriction on exiting at that place. And again, the traffic is low enough with the type of numbers that we expect with this type of use that I think we can, you know, come up with a channelized, single lane if that proves to be necessary with a concrete barrier on the sidewalk, sort of a reverse radius that would direct people to turn right. And I think if we have the chance to do that in front of the planning board, we can come up with something where, you know, we can have a discussion among experts as to what works from a traffic point of view.
Mr. Mancaro.
Go ahead.
That's okay. My concerns echo my fellow board members. I think you're referring to the old Bank East when you're talking about the bank further up on the road. And making the right-hand turn only seems to be logical. My fear is coming up Lake Street, trying to make a left into this establishment is going to be a nightmare. Because all you have to do is get one car that wants to turn, and you're going to block traffic, and it's going to stack up pretty quickly. So I almost wish you were coming in off of Main Street and exiting onto Lake Street. I have a real fear around the traffic pattern, trying to exit, trying to enter. I get the concept of what you want to do, and I think it will be a limited use, and I think it will be a rapid in and out. However, the two lanes, it may block one of the cars who wants to back out. They're going to have to wait until the traffic gets out. And based on the way the light changes, that could take some time. This is, I remember this place when it was a thriving metropolis, and it wasn't this busy. The traffic today here is really heavy. And Mr. Boucher was right. Elm Street is busy, and Main Street, I mean, is busy a very long time. I know, I live at the other end, and trying to go from one end to the other can be a nightmare, no matter what time of day you're trying to do it. I just don't know how you're going to ease the traffic in and out.
Mr. Mancaro.
I have similar concerns. And while I do appreciate that the planning board would be, you know, is the body that would be really reviewing the traffic and looking at a traffic study, the nature of the variances that we are being asked to grant, I think dictate that we have to concern ourselves with how the traffic is going to flow because clearly the stacking distance is an issue. I agree, this is a very busy intersection with turning movements that are happening all the time, you know, seemingly in every direction. The other thing that I'm mindful of is that there's also a driveway opposite, you know, the entrance that's proposed here to the Shell Station, where people are frequently trying to make a left out onto Lake Street. So you've got this conflicting movement thing that's happening that concerns me. I would say definitely you would want to have a no left onto Main. That said, I mean, I remember the CVS on the corner of Main and Hollis where, you know...
Those were...
Yeah, if you think you can do it, people take the left for similar reasons. Because there really is no going around the block. You've got to go so far out of your way to make a right and loop around. And the same thing's true here. That's going to be a concern. I'm probably, I, my concern with the stacking toward Lake Street is, you know, for the entrance stacking. If this were a quieter side street, I'd be less concerned. But it is Lake Street. It has a heavy volume of traffic. And the risk of cars waiting either to make a right in or a left in at this intersection is going to block traffic. But I'm especially concerned at the exit because you've got room for one car. And I also do agree that, you know, what happens with the problem at the window? If there is a problem at the window, that person has no place to go. If, I recognize this is a small site and it's a challenging site. But if there are a way for that person to exit, and I've been at drive-through McDonald's where that's been an issue, or a big order, the person's able to pull into a space, problem solved. I'm not seeing how that happens here. Again, the go around the block thing, I don't think works. I do have a question also, though. How are deliveries made?
Deliveries?
Deliveries to the site of product?
Of product, like Cisco deliveries or that sort of thing.
Right.
They happen in hours. They happen, the restaurant doesn't open until 11:00, so they happen in the morning.
Okay.
So, you know, just further on, and again, just kind of, same thing as Mr. Mancaro said, you know, and he did bring out the point, and I, and when I was thinking about the entrance there, you are right, there's a Shell Station. I, most times, I try to be kind, and I see somebody trying to make a left in his room, I'm going to let them go because I know what's going to happen. Because they're going to come right out, and they're going to block traffic. And, you know, if I'm a car behind, I'm not going to get there any faster, you know? But that is, that's been an issue. But, you know, again, for me, right? If I had something in front of me that, from another one of your establishments like this, that there was some real data, right, that I could look at that says, hey, in fact, I've got proof here that this is really kind of what happens in our business. And this is our peak business time. It may not be peak traffic time, but this is our peak business time, and this is what we expect. I would, I would take, you know, I would take that really wholeheartedly if that's the case. So that maybe I understand more, you know, again, I still have concerns about the cars waiting on Lake Street. But now I feel a little maybe better about, hey, I've got enough room to get in there. Because, because you're right, there may not be any problems on the window. There may be scheduled times, and I understand what you're saying. So there's a scheduled time. I don't know if the scheduled times are five minutes apart, two minutes apart, 10 minutes apart. Because you're right, if I'm picking up a pizza and I'm bringing it in my window, I'm going to leave, right? I'm going to be gone. But if I hit the light, the pattern wrong on Main Street, and I'm that first car, then the second car comes to pick up at the window, how long is that car going to be there? And I'm the second one at the window, am I going to get frustrated to try to go around? I don't know. There's no island on Main Street. If there was an island, that would definitely force a right-hand turn, and that would definitely move traffic out faster. But that's not the case. This app, you know, so again, I don't know if data from other stores, I don't know my other colleagues. I think maybe that would help me also understand more of really what the real volume is. And then, the other thing I'd like to know too is, do you, I don't know if you have knowledge of this. In your experience, when a new restaurant opens, it's the thing, right? So that's what you want. You want people going there. So you're going to have those scheduled pickups. You also said that there's walk-in, which means they can go there and walk in to pick up their pizza or order there, or they still have to order. Walk-in is what to you? Does that mean they park and go physically pick up their pizza? Or is the pizza only delivered through a drive-up window?
No, you can walk, there is a front counter.
Okay.
But you can see in that...
Right, okay.
See that glassed area there? It's a small vestibule, really.
Right.
Where you can come in, you can pay, you can do the traditional.
Right.
You know, wait 25 minutes for the pizza sort of thing. But most of the business is expected to be drive-through pickup.
I suspect that this business will be a thriving business. I suspect it would be. There's a lot of traffic there, and it's going to be convenient. The other thing I would like to know is, again, I'm sure you put all your other locations in busy spots. Those walk-ins, what's the number of walk-ins that you get? And see, and I don't know, in other situations, they may, they, you know, what is it that we were looking for, for parking or, you know? So if you have, if you have 10, 12 walk-ins an hour, plus whatever you have coming in, I mean, I don't know what that means for, do I have cars waiting to park, to do a walk-in? Is that interfering with anybody trying to get in, get out? That's the kind of questions I have, concerns that I have with this. You may not have the answers tonight, I just...
Well, I do have a partial answer, which is that we have requested this kind of point-of-sale data from what stores there are open. There's nothing nearby, there's nothing in New England that they have that they can point us to. But they are putting together some data for us that we would be able to present. I'd suggest maybe the appropriate thing is if we could table this application, if this board wants to see that data before we go to the planning board, we could do that. Because I do think that there are some viable solutions to the concerns that you've been raised. And I agree, they're good ones. I think by putting some, and maybe I can show you what I'm talking about here. That if we were to accentuate the sidewalk exit, and we could actually neck these two lanes down to a single right turn only lane, that may effectively serve the same as if there was a barrier in the street. Give us a chance to look at that, see if that's viable as an option, and also provide some more data from other locations that can help to reassure the board that the traffic is low and it's an appropriate use. And finally, another comment that I just would like to observe. As far as left turns off of Lake Street into the site, that would be true of any use here. And, you know, the fact that this is a low-volume generator and a zero-volume AM generator, I think is actually, makes this one of the preferred uses for the site. Because any use, even a, you know...
I would agree with you. When Paul Pierce was there, that'd be the same issue. I think for myself, I won't speak for others, you may be exactly right. I guess if I had some data in front of me, see, Paul Pierce is an existing, that's been here for a long time as Paul Pierce. I remember as a young man, my dad would drive up, I lived in Lowell. We would drive here for breakfast sometimes. I don't know why, but he liked greasy spoons. So we would drive here. I never knew about the place until I was a young man, right? But it's been around for a long time. It might have been, it was still Paul Pierce way back then. So we would come up here. So yes, you're right, it's been existing a long time, you have that situation. I think the difference between that is, is that we're looking, we're here because of there's a drive-up lane, right? So now the site changes. So, so, so yes, it's still an existing issue that would be there. But now, because we're looking at this, I think that if I had some data, right? It may not change that, but then I would understand, okay, we're only talking about three or four cars or five cars an hour. So it's no different than when Paul Pierce was in there. Does it make it, is the site any worse? Are you making other improvements that would make the fall better? You know, so those are all things that I think would help me feel better about making a decision on this case than at this point where I really don't know. I wouldn't really know where to, what site to lay on right now.
Mr. Mancaro.
I agree with all those comments. I also do have another question. I'm going to assume that if I am a walk-in, I'm coming, I'm going to park, I'm going to order, I'm going to come in off of the, the intent would be that I come in off of that second entrance off of Lake Street, the wider 12-foot entrance.
Right.
So how would that be signed or marked so that I know? So in other words, that the walk-in doesn't wind up sitting in the stacking for the window, not realizing they're in the wrong place?
Well, there will be signage, small directional type, four-square-feet or less type signage that indicates drive-through lane and parking.
Okay.
And that can be reinforced with pavement markings as well.
Thank you.
You'll also notice this, because of the corner of the site there, there's a lot of maneuvering rooms. So if somebody is confused which way to go, they're really not going to block anything until they figure it out.
Ms. McKay?
And in keeping with Mr. Mancaro's thoughts, will there be some kind of signage, some kind of notice that it's an entrance only, exit only, so that people would not try to go in the out or out the in? Because that may or may not cause accidents. I mean, and if you go a little bit further down on Main Street, you'll see Citizens Bank made a right turn only. Because coming out of that bank and trying to go left, even coming out for Bagel Alley just was a nightmare. And so that right turn only is really big. I like the concept, but like Mr. Mancaro said, I happen to be in Mickey D's in Concord today. And it's very small. There was a car here, the line was hitting the Main Street, and you couldn't move. People were trying to pull back out, they couldn't get out. So it was, and the car over here was beeping the horn and expecting people to move. But that is a fear. It's a real fear. I like the suggestion of the two right-hand turns.
Right, that is, of course, the picture people have in their minds when they think of drive-through at a food restaurant is lots of lines and lots of congestion. And that's, you know, something that I think the data that Mr. Boucher is looking for, that we can provide and reassure this board that that's not this kind of animal, and perhaps some condition can be placed that ensures that it is only a pickup-only drive-through in future so that it doesn't become a fast-food drive-through. I think those are the kind of things that we can work with. And if you give us the opportunity, if we can continue this, we can come back with that information.
Right. Okay. So just talk to board members. Would we, would we be in favor if the applicant would agree to it? Would we be in favor of tabling the application tonight to get more information?
It's his suggestion.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we would do that because, all right. So would you like us to table that? Okay?
I think that would be helpful.
All right, so let's just discuss this for a second before we move further. The next meeting that we have, and it has nine cases, all right? So I don't...
And a couple may be long, but anyway.
Yeah, so...
It's November 12th, there's an extra week in the agenda, so...
So basically, the opportunity is to come, the next meeting. We can't tell you when you have to come. Your next opportunity is to come next meeting, right?
November 12th.
November 12th is the next available, because we can advertise in time for that.
The one after that is the 26th.
And the other one's the 26th. Or if you need further along, just let us know. What would you prefer?
Well, I wouldn't mind, even if it's a full night. You know, I think we've narrowed a lot of the issues here to a specific set of facts, so...
Just wanted you to understand that. It could be a long night, you could be here for a while. Sometimes people have other personal commitments that they want. So I just want you to understand that. If for some reason that you needed more time, I'm sure if you called Mr. Fox, if you need to put it off again, they would do that, right?
Right.
Okay. So we would go for November...
November 12th.
November 12th, all right? So if we make a motion? Okay, so just to be clear before anybody makes a motion for that. You've heard what we're kind of looking for, for data. The only other thing I'll throw out there, maybe minor to some others, but for me, I just need maybe some reassurances. And maybe it doesn't make a difference at this site. As far as, once we get information, one of the issues we have, that I've seen is with drive-throughs, when applicants come in or owners, they have all the greatest intentions of moving people along. It takes, you know, they know what it takes to move cars along. Then I'll go to the site, whether it's fast food, fast coffee, whatever it is, right? And sometimes what I notice is that when ownership's not there or anything, no one's really paying attention to how far the cars are backed up, right? And so there's no rush. This may not even be an issue here. But again, how is this managed? You know, does Pizza Hut, are they more progressive type thing where they're taking data and it's being... And, you know, are they being measured and all that? So just kind of more information. You don't have to tell us now, just kind of, maybe just let us know how this site would be managed. Because I know you said you had one... just let us know how this site would be managed, because I know you said you had one virtual employee or type thing, so I don't know if that was somebody remotely keeping an eye on the place through cameras or whatever, but just kind of an idea of how the site would be managed, how would we be reassured that somebody's really watching of what's going on there, so, that idea.
If I could just answer that quickly.
Sure.
It might help clarify this. The big thing is no cash transaction or no monetary transactions at the window. And, you know, that's a rule, and so the driver said, you know, I'm sorry, you have to prepay, you have to preorder, you have to prepay. So that, I think that's the more effective.
So the walk-ins are strictly by credit card, debit card?
Walk-ins can do a transaction at the counter.
Okay.
And walk-ins, I mean, literal walk-ins, you know, walking all the way from home or park and walk-in.
Right.
Can do a transaction at the counter, but at the window, the window is pickup.
Only, okay.
Prepay, preorder.
Okay, all right.
And it makes a big difference.
Great, thank you. Mr. Shaw?
I had something that I had wanted to explore, just to.
Sure.
To make sure, and I'm pretty sure, so, a couple things, I'm assuming that at least primarily the intent was to try to work within the existing footprint of the structure and not necessarily do anything significantly different than that footprint. I mean, I'm doing, maybe it's the engineer in me, but I'm looking at things and just kind of wondering if there was any consideration for, could there have been basically a circular flow around the building where you could actually get vehicles around so they would kind of hug Main Street and Lake Street, you know, they would kind of circle around? I think you'd have to, you know, champer off at least probably parts of the building, at least on the Lake Street side, and then you're still faced, then you have to have your own traffic crossing within the site, so it might not make sense from a lot of different regards, but I guess first I wanted to ask if that had even been contemplated, because perhaps, again, it's completely impractical, but it was something that, just as I've looked, wondering was there any way you could move traffic around on this site, but, you know, perhaps if you could completely relocate the building, that'd be one thing, although then you might not be able to park anywhere, I don't know, again, I realize there's lots of constraints here, so that was just one thing. So I guess the first question is, was that even contemplated at all? And if not, maybe you do want to at least look into it if it makes any sense when you're going back to kind of look at some of the different things you might propose.
We can take a look at that.
And I guess the other thing I would just like to note as far as kind of things that I would especially like to see, you know, addressed, and I think we've talked about most of it, it was one of the first things I brought up, and that would be, I still, even if we, even if you do your right-turn, forced kind of right-turn, single-lane exit and things like that, I still don't see how you're going to, with the current proposal, resolve, again, the person that shows up, maybe they show up five minutes early, maybe they can't read their watch, I don't know, you know, whatever, they got there a lot faster than they expected, because they're driving, you know, back from Boston, so whatever it is, right? But I really want to see something that addresses that, because to me, that's still, you know, this is one of the items, it's about, there's 60 feet required and there's 31 feet proposed, and since that's, you know, has to be kind of resolved, to me, I don't think it would be an issue if we weren't looking for, if you weren't looking for this relief, so I still, I'm going to need some satisfaction there, or all the other things maybe could be taken care of, and I'm not sure I would be able to support the application if it comes down to not a good way to handle vehicles that show up too early or when there's issues at the window, so, and I know you kind of offered a couple of quick ideas earlier, and so I guess that's what I would ask, if part of what you at least examine.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anything else? I'd like to make a motion, if we're all set, I'd like to make a motion to table, table this application November 12th, to get further information as our discussion ensued. Is there a second by Mr. Shaw? Is there any discussion on that? All in favor of tabling this application? It's five to nothing, all right, so.
Thank you.
So thank you very much, we'll see you then. With that, I'll close the public meeting for this case. I would like to take like a three-minute break, if you don't mind, okay? And we'll be back shortly. Okay, we'll come back to order. I'd like to open the public hearing for case number four, which is Robert Rodriguez, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, Rodriguez, applicant is Dawn Evans, 41-B Fairmount Street, requesting the following special exemption, exception from the Land Use Code, Section 1A-47, subsection B, to allow a major home occupation for a dog grooming business, and two variants from Land Use Code, Section 190-47, section B, subsection three, to allow a dog grooming business in a detached trailer, where the use must be carried out strictly in principal building, it's an RV zone, Ward Four, the RV district. In this case, we'll have Estafia Boris and Nick Knackist voting, does anybody need to recuse themselves?
I do.
Ms. Mancara, thank you. Okay, come on up, give us your name and address and.
Yes.
Tell us what you want to do.
All right, my name is Timothy Evans, I am husband and co-owner of Dawn's Pet Grooming, Dawn is my wife, the applicant, and Robert Rodriguez is the owner of the property, we've been renting there for about seven years or so now. So we opened up our business as a mobile pet grooming business back in 2008, and at the time, our procedure for operation was to take a mobile pet trailer and hook it up to a pickup truck and bring it to people, and we groomed their dogs and their cats in their driveway. Just recently, in the recent past, we unfortunately lost our pickup truck, we've been through several, and it's becoming an issue, we're still trying to resolve that issue, however, in the meantime, basically as a matter of survival, we've been splitting up our business between the pets that we can take care of still by arriving at their house and going in their house and doing it that way, and there's specifically the larger dogs that we really don't have a solution for, and some of the customers have been loyal, they've been there since 2008, so we've offered them the option to come to our house and do it in our driveway, essentially the same we would do anywhere else. This amounts to, in a general week, about five to 10 customers, which is an individual pet, generally speaking, no more than two at a time. There's parking for them, we have a large driveway, so we ask them to park in the driveway, all animals are leashed, or if it's a cat, it's in the crate from the car to the trailer, and basically, the only, the only difference is that it's at our house instead of somebody else's. We've, since we've lived there, we've parked that trailer there overnight every night, because it is our business, there's an ice cream truck down the street that does the same thing, there's an oil truck down the street, it's no different. To address the, we were asked to apply for the variants to operate the business in a residential neighborhood, and a special exception, because it is a trailer, it's detached, it's not in our house or, you know, on our porch or anything like that, it's in our driveway. If you'll excuse me, I have trouble reading here. So to address the five variance points, I don't, I may not understand this procedure, but I'll do my best, the variance will not be contrary to the public interest, really, it's a very small amount of customers, we're asking, I mean, we probably take care of about 20 to 25 customers a week, and out of those, like I said, it would be five to 10 of them would be coming to us. The hours are between 10:30 and never later than 4:30 or 5 o'clock, so it's not even during a busy time during the day. They come individually, we don't take more than one at a time, we're not, we're a by-appointment business, so we don't, we don't like stack up animals and crate them and have any kind of kennels or anything like that, that's one of the things that people like, they can come with their pet, they can actually stay with Dawn while she grooms their pet in the trailer, and then they're done in an hour to an hour and a half. So most days, probably only a couple of hours, if at all, some days, nothing. I believe the spirit of the ordinance is observed, it doesn't really affect anybody that I can tell, we've spoken with most of our neighbors who seem to be okay with it, substantial justice is done, I would say, because this is for us a matter of survival, I don't think, this has been our business, like I said, since 2008, and we don't have any where to go after that, so we would probably leave the community if we couldn't continue to operate our business, which has been well-established for over a decade. The values of the surrounding properties, again, I don't see how the value would be diminished, we've, we're not doing anything different, we're parking our trailer the same place we always park it, we don't use a lot of resources, the amount of water we use on a daily basis is less than a shower, than, you know, if you took a 20-minute shower. And everything is clean, I believe I provided pictures to you guys of the site, it's right next to our porch, so people can sit on our porch if they want, or sometimes they'll sit in their car. We do ask them not to idle. What else? Literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in, well, I think I described that, we would be out of business if, so, it would cause us unnecessary hardship, I don't know about anybody in the neighborhood. And I had the other one up, I'm sorry. Okay, special exception, also has five things, list, listed in table of uses, I believe, I believe when I made the application, they looked that up, I don't know for a fact. Traffic, number two is traffic, again, like I said, no more than one car coming and going at any given hour or time. At most, two if they overlapped appointments. Public utilities, we're not using any public utilities, it's all private, owned by our landlord. Special regulations. I'm not sure about that one, and five, character of neighborhood, again, as I stated, prior to operating out of our driveway, we had been parking there at night and sometimes all day, and never had anybody complain or say that it was a eyesore, a nuisance. We only have one trailer with signage on it, we have currently another one for sale, but it's not, it's not up for signage, we could remove that if it's a problem. If you have any questions for me or Dawn, or my landlord, I'd be happy to answer.
So one of the first obvious questions I was going to ask is, I saw two trailers in the driveway.
Yes.
And I just was concerned about whether or not you were running two trailers, but.
No, we're only operating one, we can, it is for sale, if it's an issue, we can, we do have opportunity to move it, I can move it to, like my parents in Chelmsford or something.
The code states you only have, you can't have more than one commercial vehicle for an in-home business.
Okay, well, that will be gone tomorrow, we'll get that out of here.
Okay, that was just a question I had right now. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant?
Can you just address a couple of the issues that one of the letters brought up?
Sure.
One just being, cars parking in the street over the summers.
Right, I.
So, so, hold on, procedurally, what will happen is, we'll ask them questions, and you're good at asking these questions, great, we'll, we asked some questions, and then we asked for anybody who wants to support the application, then there'll be those in opposition, at that point, I'll read that letter.
Okay.
And then the applicant will have an opportunity to come back and address those issues, we can ask some questions.
Okay.
Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, it is up to us if we want to explore any of those lines of inquiry also, but I just, it's one of those, I think we, the applicant doesn't necessarily know about these communications, so you're referencing those, that starts to, you know, we can pass a copy.
I don't have a copy of the letter, no.
So we're kind of moving to that, in a way, we're moving to that phase, you know, we haven't asked for opposition or questions or concerns, however, again, if you simply have stuff you want to investigate, then now it's still reasonable and appropriate to do that.
May I ask one thing, just to be fair for the applicant, can we give them a few minutes to read that?
Yeah, we'd appreciate that, yeah.
Would that be appropriate?
Yeah, I mean, or I think, you know, it's kind of. Yeah, I mean, I, or I think, you know, it kind of comes down to more if Mr. Knakis is mostly just trying to explore something that's, that's kind of, doesn't need to have this message read, but if it makes sense to have him, give him an opportunity to read it, then we should just do that.
I guess you could pose a question as, just as a question as concerned.
Yeah, if you don't need me to address everything in that, I probably can answer the question.
Okay, so...
So, I think it's fine either way.
Okay, so, you can go ahead and, once you ask the question you want, and then...
No, I'll let him read the letter, I'll wait till that time.
All right.
Okay, well, I can answer that one specifically right now, if you'd like, about the people parking and idling on the side of the street.
Was that your question, the idling and parking, or the others' questions?
Uh, there's others.
There's others.
Okay, all right.
So, maybe what you want to do is take a, read of that letter?
Give us a moment.
Sure. Do you want to take another recess? Okay, we'll take another five-minute recess for the record, for the applicant to read a letter, which will be read into the record, I'll read it into the record when it comes time. So, we're on five-minute recess. Okay, we're gonna come back out of recess and back to the public hearing.
Yes, thank you.
All right, so Mr. Knakis had some questions based on a letter that was sent in by a neighbor and we referenced that, we gave you time to read that letter. So, go ahead, Mr. Knakis.
So, sort of, have you just addressed a couple of the issues they brought up?
Sure.
So, as far as scheduling goes, how do you make sure that you don't have multiple cars showing up at the same time? Do you have to pre-book everything?
We pre-book everything, yeah. And I'm the one who handles the appointment setting and I make sure that there's plenty of time in between because she needs time to, you know, clean and prepare for, if there's more than one customer in a day, which honestly is, the most we ever have is two at our house in one day. She may have three appointments, but one of them will probably be remote.
Okay. And then, just wanted to ask about the pet hair?
Yeah, we, first of all, that, that's anecdotal. I'm not sure, I mean, I'm sure it's plausible that, you know, she may have found a clump of hair or something. We use a Clipper Vac, which is mostly for our convenience, but it sucks all the hair as she clips. So, there's minimal hair left over and she vacuums it up before doing a sweep and eradicating it that way, yeah. We do our best not to let it fly out the window or anything. We keep our front window closed when we're, you know, cleaning and, especially because we know she's made that point. Our neighbor across the street has made that point to us. So, since I have talked to her, I've addressed many of those issues.
Okay, and last thing would just be to, just make sure that you're complying with the noise ordinance going forward?
Right, again, I think, I think closing that front window is a big part of that with the noise. She told me she could hear Dawn saying "good dog" and it made her porch unlivable or something. And I thought that was a little excessive. I mean, she's, she's not operating anytime after like 4:30 or 5 o'clock and she, she might be a little deaf, so she talks loud, but, I mean, we talk on the porch too, so. Yeah, and some of those, some of those things, I don't even know. Like I said, they're anecdotal, the cigarette butts and things like that. Nobody is dropping butts on our driveway. If they were, I'd clean them up.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, hold on, why not?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that. I have a few questions. Again, referring to the letter here, and again, this is really about, you know, the impact of the neighborhood.
Yes.
There was a mention here of idling cars and, you know, because it was hot and stuff. So, and you said that the parking was in the driveway.
Yes, and we've...
So, it almost sounded like the car was in the street and, you know...
I think there were a couple of occasions where that did happen. We've since made it very clear to customers how we give them directions to our place and we tell them to pull right into the driveway. And we usually are there waiting for them, so they're not gonna be idling out there, you know, waiting for us. If it's a hot day or a cold day, we can invite them in to sit on the porch or even in our kitchen or something if they'd like, or in the trailer.
And that was the other question, so this is a year-round business?
It is a year-round business, yes.
Yeah, so if it's wintertime and it's 20 degrees out and it's a nice day, you're still, you're gonna have a client over? You'll do, yeah, 'cause I don't know if it has to be heated in there or not.
It's propane heat, it's like the same as an RV trailer, I guess, would be the best description, yeah.
The hours of operation, from what I'm gathering from you is like, you said 10:30 to like 5:00? Is it like 10 to 5:00? Because I think if we were going to discussion and, you know, we would find this favorable or something, I'd kind of be looking to really put, you know, limit that operation. So, is it, what would you be comfortable with for the hours of operation?
We're, you know, we're willing to consider, you know, enough time to do, you know, a couple of appointments a day.
And I'm not telling you what time, but it's 10 to 5:00 kind of?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's well within the perimeters that we're already, I mean, she books her last appointment for like 3:00, so we're done by 4:30 or 5:00 at least. That's, when I say to 5:00, that would be the end time.
Right, yeah, okay, and that's kind of what we're looking for.
Yes.
So, so 10, like a 10 to 5:00?
10:30 would be the first appointment of the morning.
So, all right, so 10 to 5:00. Is this Monday through Friday or is this a Sunday?
Monday through Friday, we have, actually, we've been doing Tuesday through Saturday mostly and... Yeah, and there have been occasional pickups on off-days too, so.
All right, so what...
But we don't, we can, we can, we can make sure it's...
What would be the days that you would...
We normally operate Tuesday through Saturdays and she will go out and do nail trims in the car on Mondays off. And so, that's almost never been a day we've, but occasionally, we've had a makeup day for somebody on a Sunday.
So, it's usually, it could be possibly Monday through Saturday? You don't do any Sundays?
Only if it's like a makeup situation. And I don't have to do that if that's a problem.
Okay, I'm just curious, okay. All right, any other questions? Okay. I, and I can't ask the person to come up, I'm gonna ask you. You obviously rent this property?
Yes.
Right, and your landlord or the person you rent from obviously has new issues with this?
Would you like to speak at all?
Well, I'll ask for some people in favor, I'm just asking you.
As far as I know, yeah, he's totally on our side, he's here with us tonight.
Okay, all right, great. Any other questions? No other questions?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is anybody else in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the application? Okay, seeing none. Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition? All right, before I go move on, there was two letters that came in. The first one's, it's quite lengthy, that is gonna be in the record, will be posted with the record, but it is from...
There's actually three.
There's two, yeah. There's three.
There's two shorter ones.
Okay, yes, two shorter ones, you're right, correct. So, the first one is from Sandra Belknap of 40 Fairmount Street. And part of a discussion ensued about this, some of the issues that she had brought up in this letter. And this, this letter is really in, pretty much in opposition of the applications with lots of concerns. She always, she also sent an addendum to this case and in commenting on this case and Section 190-134 and made some comments on all these subsections. We have this in the record, we've all read this, so we have this as testimony. The other letter is from Carol Teller, also not in favor of this application from 39 Fairmount Street. And another letter from Stephanie and Jim Dufoe of 6 U.S. Street. They oppose the, they oppose the application also for several reasons that we've talked about, noise, signage, outside storage, traffic, parking, et cetera. All kind, all of the same issues that the first, that Mrs. Belknap addressed. So, with that, those three letters are in the record as in opposition. So...
No, they can speak in rebuttal.
So, so with that, per hour bylaws, you have an opportunity to come back for five minutes if you want to speak and rebuttal to anything else about these letters or any issues in there, or you can rest. And just get, get, hold on. We have to be able, first of all, per procedure, this person didn't come up originally. So, if we want to make an exception, we'd have to vote on that? So, you want to, want to vote on that? So, you want to make a motion?
Move to accept, or make an exception for Dawn Evans, the applicant, to speak in rebuttal.
Second by Mr. Knakis, all in favor? That's five to nothing. Sorry about that procedure.
Okay.
Okay, so go ahead, just tell your name and address, just...
My name is Dawn, I'm at 41 Fairmount Street. And it's pretty much, I'm the one doing the work on these animals. And I just would like to maybe put an idea of what a day would be. It would be, I have a horse trailer, it's got heat, hot water, it's a whole little grooming salon. It's really pretty cool and it does work all winter and summer.
Just speak on the mic.
Sorry. And I do, you know, I do all year round and I have for the past, you know, we've owned it for 10 years, but I've been doing this for 15 years. And so, a lot of the animals that I take on are special needs animals, they're senior animals, they're elderly, there may be dogs that can't go to a salon. It's kind of very specific and because I have the experience to do it, the clients I have, I've had for a long, long time. And I've been taking care of these animals for a long time too. And if someone comes to my house, they come at 10:30, they pull in the driveway in front of the trailer, I'm there, or Tim is there. We greet the dog, talk to the owner for a few minutes. The dog goes in the trailer with me and the owner usually sits in their car in front of the trailer. Sometimes it's an hour, might be an hour and a half depending on what's going on with the dog and how much work they need to be done. And it's handy because if, again, a lot of these animals are kind of special needs animals and if there's a concern, the owner's right there and I could, you know, call them and I'll just ask them to come to the trailer if we have a question, if we need to discuss something. And then I'm done, the dog goes back in the car, the people leave. I've got at least 45 minutes to an hour before somebody else shows up. The tops, this happens three times a day. And tops, this happens, you know, two to three days a week. It's not a constant flow of traffic in and out and in and out. And I'm not sure where some of these, you know, I mean, we tried to be really courteous with people. When this first happened, we really had no idea what we were gonna do at all. I don't have, you know, it's huge, it's a huge financial hardship for us. It's been one year. And this kind of evolved naturally, like we didn't plan on being here a year later. We're just really trying really hard to not have to either, you know, I really don't know what we would do. I'm 46, I've got a, you know, a big hearing deficit, my hands don't work very good. You know, I've been wrestling dogs for 20 years. I don't really know what I would do after this. I do know that this is enough for Tim and I to get by for now. And it's not, we're not running this big, this big company. And like I said, I certainly always want to be considerate with my neighbors and I feel like we've done everything we could to broach certain subjects with them. And we're more than willing to talk to them if there's, if there's a concern about hours of operation or traffic issues or, you know, I would be, I would love for them to come and talk to me and we could work something out. And I guess that's really all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you, hold on. Is there any questions? Okay, thank, thank you very much. No, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's just, it's just one person and that's the rules, okay. There is nobody here present that was part of the opposition, so there's nobody else to come up and speak in rebuttal to what they just said. So, so now we'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts, anybody?
I have a question.
Sure.
Since the building owner was here and acknowledged assent, do we need to, you know, make that known for the record? Because we all saw that he assented to this.
I think the applicant did, did...
He did ratify that.
By testimony, yeah, he did. And I was just getting, I just wanted, you know, I guess it was just a making sure that not only we, but, you know, the citizens that are interested in this case that understand that the, that they do have support from the person they're renting.
They're probably from...
Okay.
Yeah. That was just kind of...
Thanks.
I, I'll go ahead. You know, the letter that we got was pretty... I, I, I'll go ahead, you know, the letter that we got was pretty extensive, and, and I, and this is what, you know, we didn't have any testimony yet, I, I'd read this letter several times and looked at it, and I'm always, as we all are, we're always concerned about the impact of the neighborhood and what's going on. I, I do have a feeling, though, after hearing the applicant speak, and of course, I think that we have the opportunity, if we like, to make some stipulations, but I think that this business is not what I thought it was, I honestly thought that, that there was like, dogs there on the hour, almost, you know, like, there was cars waiting in line to have their dogs groomed, you know, so, and then I saw two trailers there, so then I was thinking, you know, you know, that, that maybe two people were working, and so, you know, so there's two things we're looking at, right, we're looking for the major home occupation, which, we know that there are some successful dog grooming businesses that work out of their homes, but in this case, they have a mobile unit that they'd like to, to use. The neighborhood, again, I don't find it congested, I, I mean, I drive that neighborhood, and, and, and it's true, it is a quiet neighborhood unless you live there, it, it's not a, an avenue to go to anywhere, you know, since the taryn's been closed, I'm sure there's just really no traffic that comes through that, that neighborhood at all. But with that, you know, I just, again, the observation is, is that, you know, there's, the applicant stating that it looks like a maximum kind of a free, maybe appointments a day, and it's, does not seem to be a seven day a week operation, so that's my observation. I'd like to hear from the rest of the board and what their thoughts are, I, I guess I, I don't really have, I don't really have a sense of really any reason why I'm really, really opposed to it, and I just want to feel more comfortable if I were to support the application.
I think I agree for the most part, after getting the letters in, I thought it was kind of a bigger operation going on with multiple cars there at a time, and a lot of appointments per day, but it seems like that's kind of a, a side deal, whereas it'll be just a couple of appointments, a couple of days a week, so I think they, they really addressed all of the complaints that were brought up in the letters, and so, based on that, I think I can support the application.
Mr. Shaw?
I'm actually kind of struggling with it, and, and it's really hard, because I, I think they seem like really nice people, and I really want to support them in this endeavor, I, I have a, my big kind of general struggle with it is almost just conceptually regardless of who would be doing this, so I might be open to fairly significant limits being placed in terms of the total amount of the operation going on, and the kind of containment of noise, and, and those things that have been raised as concerns, and that, you know, there's no, you know, long idling in the driveway, et cetera. I, I basically just kind of try to apply the test of would I want this on the driveway across from my home, or my next door neighbor, and from the general concept of, you know, a, a major home occupation in a business, it's supposed to be pretty much in a way that's, you almost don't know what's going on, you know, the, the appearances, the impact, the activity is, that's, that's kind of what's there in the code, and so I'm struggling, it's even harder, I, 'cause I, I basically had a lot of concerns coming in, and it's even harder in a way, because I think these people are, you know, I think they're trying to do, you know, the right thing, they're trying to, you know, operate a good business, they have a good reputation, they're, you know, you know, all that, I, they're clearly well established, et cetera, I'm just concerned that if we do approve this, that we do have sufficient kind of restrictions or limitations, that we are doing, I think, a reasonable job of addressing the neighbor's concerns, and, you know, I try to apply the test of if it was in my next door neighbor's driveway, what would I be willing to essentially, you know, deal with? So, that's, that's kind of where I'm at, so I guess I'm still interested in the, the rest of, you know, thoughts here.
Okay, I guess I'll put my two cents in on the table. When I first saw this, like everyone else, I had great concerns, and I wondered, you know, is this going to be another huge business that is going to have people coming and going, lots of cars, pickup, drop off, but in listening to the applicant, I learned that this is almost a special needs dog grooming operation, and in further listening, I learned that this is an individual with a disability who is maintaining special needs animals, so the limits around what's gonna happen have diminished, the capacity has gone down in a very large way. I think that she did say she limited her hours from ten thirty to five, two to three animals per day, two to three animals per week. I think that Mr. Evans did state that he would offer to have people come in the ha, the van or his home, rather than leave a car idle in the summer for the air conditioning, maybe in the winter for the heat, however, with a special needs dog, just like anything else, if there is an issue, if there's anxiety, or whatever may or may not happen with the animal, the owner is right there to take that right back down, so then there is no issue, so listening to all of this, I went from, oh dear, what, you know, what's gonna happen, to, yeah, I can't say no. I need to support this, and I do support it, probably because the capacity is so limited, and the, the clientele is so specialized, and those are my rationale and my reasonings for support.
Mr. Shaw?
Thank you, that was very helpful for me.
Oh, you're welcome.
I, I do agree with you, Mr. Shaw, that, that I would support any restrictions on, you know, the hours, or days, days during the week, or, in the number of appointments per day, and also make it very clear, again, about the, I don't know how we would do that, but the idling and the non-idling of cars, I mean, you know, if, if you decide to idle your car in the driveway, I don't think you could do anything about it. I think it's important that, that the client is packed in the driveway, not in the street, and I think that goes a long way, too, and, that, you know, in that case, and as far as noise goes, you know, again, I know there's ordinance in the city, I think it's annoying, like, and I think they, they made, the applicants did consciously say, hey, we're gonna close that front window of the trailer, because we, we don't want to upset the neighbors, and we know that noise travels out the front. So I think that they've genuinely addressed that, but I think, again, maybe some restrictions on hours of business, and the number of maybe visits per day, if that's where you felt comfortable with, I would support.
Right, they, they stated that.
Six to ten a week.
A week, okay. So I, you know, I think if we, I'm fine even if we do something at the higher end, and doesn't, I don't not even think it has to be by day, I think if we just go with, you know, the, you know, maybe we cap it at ten, or whatever number, something like that.
For the application, yeah.
For the, for the application, yeah.
How about hours of, of business?
And the same thing, you know, basically with ten thirty to five, I think was, you know, stated, or ten to four thirty, so, and even if we just said ten to five, I think that's fine to cover the the range without it being too restrictive, and I think, you know, they already stated Tuesday to Saturday was their day, so I think Tuesday, Saturday, ten to five, that's, that's restricted to, you know, no more than ten appointments a week, would be, I think that's, that's pretty reasonable, that's, that's, on average, it would be at most two a day, on average.
And in, if it's okay, Mr. Chair, and in keeping with your comments, Mr. Shaw, maybe acknowledging that this is for a specialized group of animals, the dogs that she grooms, the clientele is specialized, so that it wouldn't maybe drift into, as, as things do, that, you know, kind of creep into typical, and grooming, that would pick up, but in this case, if it is a specialized clientele, it will always maintain its limitations.
You know, I agree with you, I don't know how you can determine whether a dog is special or not.
Wow.
Because we may know it's special, but no one else would know.
I understand, but that, how do you do that with a child?
Yeah. I think the number of visits per week, I think, kind of covers it, so.
That's pretty much it, yeah.
I don't care if they have special dogs or not special dogs.
It's special needs.
You know what I mean?
I talked to you a disability advocate.
So, so, you know, I, 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 I know what you're going for, and you were trying to, you know, really make it more reasonable, but I, I think that, I don't know how you would, how you would police that, or how you, how, how would code enforcement?
We have enough, we have enough challenges for code enforcement to deal with, let alone determine a special need.
I think Mr. McKinney might find this interesting.
Does anybody want to make a motion? This sounds like you have it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shaw.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of, well, actually, first I want to ask, we've got both a special exception and a variance, so I think we should do the special exception first.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, please.
So, and I'll just read that part of it, so again, owner is Robert Rodriguez, applicant is Dawn Evans, the address is forty-one B Fairmount Street, and the first item we'll cover is a request for a special exception from land use code section one ninety dash forty-seven B to allow a major home occupation for a dog grooming business. It is listed in the table of uses as just noted, the, will not create undue traffic congestion congestion or duly impair pedestrian safety, will not overload public water, drainage, or sewer, or other municipal system. I don't believe there are any, well, any, there are special regs as far as what a home, major home occupation is, which the intent is to meet this with, other than the area variance, which we'll, we'll note following here, so the special regs, regulations are fulfilled. Will not impair the integrity, be out of character with neighborhood, or be detrimental to health, morals, or welfare of the residents, so I do want to note some stipulations that'll apply both for the special exception and the variance, the, the, there are several limitations to the scope of the business, the hours will be ten to five, days of operation Tuesday through Saturday, maximum of ten customer visits per week, it was already noted, just by operation, and I don't think this, I'm not putting this as a stipulation per se, but the, there's only one client or one appointment at a time, just the way the business operates, so just noting that, as far as, again, commentary, not specifically a requirement, since it would, it's already naturally restricted, I believe. And also that reasonable accommodations will be made as far as noise, limiting noise, especially with, with actions like, as already noted, closing the, the front of the trailer, and, you know, where possible, as well as already, again, the the people coming for the dog grooming or pet grooming will be requested to park in the driveway where there is space for them to park already, and to limit, you know, idling of vehicles. Were there any other conditions that anybody?
Harvard.
Okay, so with that, I, again, I move to approve the special exception.
Seconded by Ms. McKay, is there any discussion, all those in favor, it's five to nothing.
And then we have, again, for the, the same owner, applicant, and address, the second item is a variance request for, from land use code section one ninety dash forty-seven B three, to allow dog grooming business in a detached trailer, where the use must be carried out strictly in the principal building, and again, this is in the R B zone. So the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than the variance, and this is primarily that the business is conducted in a trailer, and that's where all the operational aspects are of this, and so and, and the fact that they're actually renters, not owners of the, the building as well, there's perhaps limitations in terms of what they could do, in terms of implementing the business into, inside the, the structure, but primarily, it is the fact that the, the, the activity is already basically self-contained within the, the trailer itself. It's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, there's no indication of any negative effects on surrounding property values, it's not contrary to public interest, and substantial justice will be served, and again, I move to approve this area variance.
Seconded by Ms. Boris.
And, and with all those previous stipulations as well.
Seconded by Ms. Boris, just a discussion, just real quick, I, I, it doesn't need to be thrown in, but again, the applicant talked about the fact that there's only one trailer being used, that's what the code allows. They said they would be moving the trailer, but again, it, the idea is, is that this business is only operating out of one trailer.
And adhering to the one commercial vehicle.
Right, right.
Which, which is part of the major home occupation already, yeah.
Okay, all right, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, that's five to nothing, congratulations, your, your application, both applications have been approved, so just be aware, there's a there's a thirty day window of appeal, okay, so just, just, and, and, yeah, so just, just be aware, okay? Good luck, all right, if you've got any questions, you can talk to Mr. Falk. Have a good evening, with that, I'll close the public meeting for case number four. Welcome back, Mr. Minkera, thank you, for being patient. So we have some meeting minutes. Have a good evening.
Good night.
We have a meeting minutes from September twenty-fourth. Anybody see any issues with that, or any questions or corrections they'd like to make? No? Okay, so, so we'll, we'll have, we'll have, on this one, we'll, on the meeting minutes, we'll have Mr. Minkera vote on both meeting minutes, and, and then alternate with Ms. Boris for the first one, and then Mr. Canakis for the second one. So, any, any discussion now, so I'll make a motion to approve the September twenty-fourth meeting minutes. Seconded by Mr. Shaw, any discussion, seeing none, all in favor? Okay, so that's five, that's Ms. Boris and Mr. Minkera, so, so Boucher Shaw, McKay, Morris, and Minkera. All right, we have meeting minutes from October eighth, two thousand nineteen, does anybody see any issues, questions, or corrections? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the October eighth, two thousand nineteen meeting minutes. Seconded by Mr. Canakis, all in favor? Okay, so, so voting on that was, it's gonna be, yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be Shaw, Boucher, McKay, Ms. Minkera, and Canakis, sorry about that, Ms. Boris.
We don't have an agenda for the next meeting, 'cause we have an extra week in the schedule, we have an extra week in October, and the two weeks in November, so I'll have, I should have it ready in the next few days, I'll email it to everybody, I, it looks like a fairly heavy agenda with about nine cases, including the tabled case, so a couple of them may be a little lengthy, but the others are pretty cut dry like normal, so, we also have the, the meeting dates for
So we have a draft for the two thousand twenty?
So, is the presidential primary on February eleventh?
I realize I don't know that date yet offhand, but, because we could run into, run into a conflict there.
I think we had the, the meeting date on November 10th.
No, 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 the February, the presidential primary. I don't think it's listed on here, so it's, you know, it's New Hampshire only, right?
Want to check into that?
We can check into that.
I'll check it right now.
Would that be on Thursday?
No, it's a Tuesday.
So we would have the meeting on, so we always have the meeting on the, on the Wednesday, the next day.
So, so, so you're trying to...
I'll check into that, yeah. And we can revisit, revisit this at the next meeting.
Okay. Is there any other business? Anyone want to make a motion? Mr. Minkera? Okay, motion is to adjourn. All, seconded by Mr. Shaw in favor? Ms. Boris and Mr. Mink, and Mr. Kanakis for this one. All right, so, so that motion passes, so we're adjourned at nine o'clock.